From closed session, and we will be beginning our public hearing for the 2024-2025 budget.
So tonight, the Board of Education will be adopting the fiscal year 2025 budget. At the last meeting in July regarding the budget was the approval of the tentative budget. So tonight is the actual adoption of the fiscal year 25 budget.
Hold on one, just clarification, do I have to start this or not?
You can just stand by to order and he can start the presentation.
So the President of the Board calls the public hearing to order regarding proposed 2025-2024-2025 budget.
Okay, repeat. So tonight will be the approval of the 2024-25 budget. In the, at the July board meeting, the Board of Education approved the tentative budget. So there have been changes since the approval of the tentative budget to tonight's actual adopted budget for the fiscal year. So just going through the timeframe or timeline, again, tonight will be the approval of the adopted budget. After tonight, all Board of Education members would need to sign the budget for the fiscal year and then submit it to the county and ISBE. So going through a little Budget 101, there are operating funds and non-operating funds that make up the budget. So operating funds are the education fund, operation and maintenance, transportation, IMRF and FICA and TORT. Basically, those are the funds that operate the school district in regards to services, transportation, salary benefits. And there are non-operating funds such as debt service, capital projects, working cash, and life safety funds. So those are regulated funds that don't operate essentially the school budget. Looking at last year fiscal year 23-24, here are the unaudited budget and unaudited actual comparisons through all funds. The district took a conservative approach of underestimating the revenues. The district also created new investment strategies to maximize the high interest that was going around in regards to CPI. But this just compares the budget versus unaudited actuals per fund. Here are the expenditures of each fund from last fiscal year comparing budgeted to unaudited actuals. Uaudited actuals would be confirmed around October, November of this year when the audit is complete. So in summary, looking at the operating versus non-operating funds, the district is projected to have an unaudited surplus in the operating funds of roughly $112,000. And on the non-operating funds, the district has projected a deficit of $300,000. And again, that is non-operating funds, which includes the HVAC project, which saw a significant surplus in fiscal year 23. So the funds arrived in one year and spent the second year. But in the operating funds, there is a projected surplus of $112,000. This is just a historical graph looking at operating funds only dating back to 2015. That really dives into the surplus and deficits across the board. So the district has been fiscally responsible within the operating funds. So looking forward to this fiscal year, the revenue assumptions, the district is projecting a 96.5% levy collection rate. Historically, the district is collecting roughly 99% of the levy tax collection. Interest on investments is projected at 3.5%, which is a conservative approach in the investment category of local revenue. On the state side, there is a projection of decrease in special ed funding and a flat revenue in the state general funding. On the federal side, in fiscal year 25, the district will not be collecting any ESER funds or spending ESER funds. So that is factored into the budget, and there is a projected decrease of all title funds.
So very conservative?
Yeah, very conservative on the revenue side. The state and federal, or at least the state side, is consistent as, you know, steady. There isn't really a decrease in or increase in safe funding. On the federal side, there is more of a knowledge base, knowing that ESER is no longer, and knowing that we already received confirmation of what the title grants will look like this year. But it is a conservative approach on the, on the local revenue side, which is the largest source of revenue for the district. So comparing the revenues only from the operating and non-operating funds, the district is projecting a total of $32.9 million of revenue in the operating funds. And in the non-operating funds, the district is projecting roughly $1.5 million. And that is largely from the debt service fund of the property taxes for our outstanding debt that we have. So going back to the topic of conservative, so the, as a whole, as a pie, the district receives roughly 89% of its revenue from local sources. And within that 89%, roughly 83% comes from property taxes. 7.9% of the total revenue come from state, and 3% comes from federal. So the district is taking a conservative, conservative approach of that 89% of its total revenue. So there is a conservative approach. Now looking at the expenditure assumptions, salary benefits, there is a slight increase in salaries in regards to hires, roughly $77,000. So there is the assumption of that. And also, the district is roughly, you know, taking into accounts roughly $750,000 of general salary benefits from ESER funding to the general cost. So that's in, taken consideration into this fiscal year's budget. There is an increase of service and professional development costs factored into this budget to provide additional resources to our current staff that will trickle down to our students, and a flat increase of outplacement tuition costs. Now comparing the budget expenditures from the operating to non-operating, in total, the district is projected to spend $32.9 million in the operating funds and $1.6 million in the non-operating funds. And the non-operating funds consist of the bond and interest payments. And then the operating funds of the 32.9 includes transportation, salary and benefits, outplacement costs, and professional development. As a whole, the district, and as a total of expenditures, the district spends roughly 73% of its total expenditures on salary benefits, 11% on purchased services, 4% on supplies and materials, 12% on other. And then in regards to the purchased services, that includes, you know, PD, outplacement costs, shared costs of transportation. So that is a large percentage of our, of our pie, but it is normal for districts in this area. So diving into the whole entire fiscal year 25 budget, this is comparing revenues and expenditures across all funds. So as a summary, in the operating funds, the district is projecting a balanced budget. And on the non-operating funds, the district is projecting a deficit of $129,000. So in summary, the district is taking a conservative, conservative approach on both the revenue and expenditure sides, and overestimate a little bit on the expenditure sides to, again, be conservative. But the district is committed to, to a balanced budget, and this would illustrate back-to-back years of a balanced budget.
How many years have you been here, Anthony?
This is my third year.
The third year wasn't your budget.
But the first year wasn't your budget.
I know there was a-
The first big deficit year was not your budget.
Correct. I know there was a question that came up at one of the town, the previous town hall meeting of what was the difference between the tentative budget, which illustrated a deficit in the operating funds, and now a balanced budget in the operating funds. Over that course of a month, a month and a half, the district really maximized efforts to look at our current students living in our, in our district boundaries. You know, being respectful and physically responsible to taxpayers. We did say no to students that in the past had been utilizing services and said, no, you do not live in the district. It should be maximized to our current students. And those students that we did say no, did receive significant costs of transportation, significant costs to outplacement tuition, significant costs of additional student services. So that right there was a significant savings in the difference. The district also implemented a transportation reimbursement program for student, or families who are utilizing sped transportation, which essentially decreases significantly the cost of tuition, tuition costs for, or excuse me, transportation costs. Essentially, the district spends nearly triple the dollars compared to this new reimbursement that we're implementing this year. And lastly, Operation Maintenance, our Director of Buildings and Grounds, Joe Smith, and I worked with two construction companies that bought bulk of service hours to use throughout the year rather than calling on hand and just asking quick service. We bulk ordered the service, which significantly cut the service expenditures in half for maintaining the buildings.
Nice. So at this time, I'm just going to continue with our public hearing. I'll ask if there are additional comments from the members of the Board of Education regarding the proposed budget. So comments or questions?
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Crunching the numbers.
Definitely paying attention to, thank you for paying attention to areas where we can find ways to save or be cost-effective with our budgets.
Yeah, creative solutions to be cost-effective. Thank you.
Transportation, transportation.
Transportation is, yes, that's a, that's a hurdle that the district, over the past, it's not relatively a new hurdle to overcome. And other districts are facing that issue as well. Transportations are short drivers, drivers right now, so they have to increase the payroll costs to recruit, which goes back on the district. So we're not the only district that facing high transportation costs, but it's the strategies to overcome that. So the, the reimbursement program saves significant dollars. The board and the district will be going out to bid for a new transportation company throughout this year based on new state laws. So that will help a little bit in cost, but yes, transportation across all districts in the area are facing that increase of cost.
One last from the board?
Thank you.
I'll ask at this time if there are any public comments concerning the proposed budget. No? All right. The President then declares that the public hearing on the proposed 2024-2025 budget is closed. We'll proceed with our agenda and approval of minutes. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 10th, 2024, regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the September 10th, 2024, regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. We're going to move into public comment. I haven't read this in a while, so I'll read our guidelines. Good evening. Public comment is a time for the community to address the boards with comments and questions. Each community member addressing the board has five minutes. Once you have been notified, your time is up. Kindly step away from the podium. Public comment will be for 30 minutes total, with no more than each subject lasting 20 minutes. Please understand that this is not an engagement time. The board will consider your comments and its decisions. For those comments or questions requiring a follow-up response, the Board President or Superintendent will follow up. And first, we have Heather Booth.
Hi, my name's Heather Booth. I have two students at the high school, and they've gone all the way through in D201. I wanted to come here tonight first to give the board an update on our wonderful high school band program. I came to speak to the board several years ago about the need for support from all corners to sustain our band program after the pandemic's devastating effects on staffing and enrollment numbers in the band. Since then, as I hope you've noticed, I am so pleased to share with you and let you all know that we see so many successes in the band program. If you've attended football games this year, you've seen and heard, I'm not joking, the best halftime show I've seen in all the years I've been going to football games here. Energetic pep tunes from the stands. We've got a great, a great group of kids this year. On Thursday, the band is going to lead off the homecoming parade, and you'll get a close-up view of their very, very snazzy new uniforms that the boosters were able to fund thanks to many, many years of fundraising and with the generosity of the board and the district's assistants. The Fine Arts Cafe on Wednesday, October 9th, is a great opportunity to see how our district's arts program has flourished over the past few years. It's a great season for music and art from our students, and I do hope board members find the time, and the public find the time, to attend a performance even if you don't have a student currently enrolled in the program. High school and junior high band students contribute greatly to an enriching environment in our schools and for our entire community. What would a parade be without a band? And we're so pleased to be able to cheer them on. I'm the Vice President of the Band Boosters, one of the Vice Presidents, and I want to acknowledge the support from the district and the board in achieving and sustaining these successes. Our dedicated band directors really do work tirelessly. They come in early to lead jazz band classes, clubs for kids who show up so early, so dark, so cold in the winter to play jazz. They stay late for rehearsals, for concerts. They have open door policies for the students that give them a school family, where they're really, really valued and they're encouraged. And our directors are just such wonderful role models for our students. And the boosters are so grateful to have seen over the past few years that they have your support as a board as well. Even with the support that the district has been able to offer and the work that the band parents and students have done in fundraising, another fundraising date, mark your calendar for December 6th, it's our All Hands on Deck Craft Show. The district does lag behind others in ways that the boosters cannot fully compensate for. A physically deteriorating band room, replacing critical instruments like a piano, modern equipment like stage microphones for drama students, and similar infrastructure needs are expenses that far outpace the funding potential of parent efforts and modest grant writing. For this reason, among many others, I was very pleased to see that the district had called for a referendum on the November ballot. I've put the work into fundraising, first as a parent volunteer, then as the PTO President at Manning Elementary, and now as the Vice President of the Band, Band Boosters of CUSD 201. It is hard work, and it's work that just falls to a few people in the community at large. And while we do it with eagerness and enthusiasm, bake sales just don't pay the bills. I know the decision to go to referendum is never taken lightly. The expense in energy, time, and dollars is significant, and I appreciate that the board took this move with caution. While I know the increased tax burden will be noticeable, I trust that you believe this is the right decision. And if I, like every parent who's put their child through 201, trust you with my children, and I absolutely do. I am committed to trusting you with my tax dollars. An adage that I've often returned to in my parenting is the phrase, "You pay now or you pay later." As my husband and I decide how to spend our time, energy, and money as parents, I believe the same is true of funding community resources, like high-quality public education that is open and available to all students in our community. We can pay the price now, hard as it may be to swallow and sacrifice as we may, or we will surely pay a higher price whether to take on a similar plan deeper into a period of inflation, or to be forced to take even more drastic funding burdens on, or to pay as a community for the diminished relative property values one would expect in a town that demonstrates that it doesn't value a high-quality and educational environment for its children. I've been a Westmont resident for nearly 20 years, and I'm ashamed to say that I was a part of the problem in the past. I have voted no on a past referendum. I thought the district should cut corners and do more with less. But since then, I've seen that there comes a point when this is just not possible as an institution, as a public institution can only do less with less. Less growth and development, less health, less inclusion, less opportunity for exceptional education. And I'm seeing again that the parenting adage is true, pay now or pay later. Now is later, and I'm ready to make it right and pay up and see 201 flourish and build on its great successes in a healthy and modern environment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Andrew Cross.
Hello, good to see you all tonight. Just wanted to speak briefly on the topic of the referendum. My name's Andrew Cross. I am a dad of three, current and future, 201 students. As the previous speaker said, I think there's a very real cost associated with the referendum, right? It's something that everyone is going to feel in terms of a tax increase, and it will be on everyone's minds in terms of whether they are voting yes or no, it will be top of mind. However, I think a yes versus a no vote is a little bit of a misnomer, even though, right, that's what's going to be on the ballot. It's really about now or later. That's the decision that we have to make. And there is so much of a cost associated with later in terms of millions of dollars of deferred maintenance. We cannot kick the can down the road five, 10, 15 years, as was mentioned. And so I'm very proud to be voting yes. I would encourage others to do so. And I think it's been mentioned in, you know, town hall and other settings that we are not looking for a fancy school in 201. We are looking for a school that we can be proud of. We are looking for a building that adequately meets the needs of our students, and I think that is what we are voting yes for. The last thing I'll say is, just over the past week or so, I've had a chance to talk to some neighbors, people who live on my block, and just ask, you know, where's your head at with this referendum? And I have talked to neighbors who have kids who have aged out of the district. They have kids that are in their 30s like I am now, and they've said, look, if there's one place that we are willing to invest, it's in our future, it's in our students, and that is something that I don't take for granted. I am immensely grateful for that, and would encourage anyone in their shoes to consider voting yes as well. So thank you to the administration and the school board for everything you do, putting our students first. We appreciate you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll continue. Thank you for coming and giving your words and your thoughts. Thank you. We'll proceed with the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. There are no personnel approvals for this meeting, so that is skipped. Number two, approval of the September 2024 expenditure report. Three, ratification of August 2024 regular payroll. Four, appointment of the Title IX officer. Five, equipment disposal. Six, presentation of ISBE salary compensation report. Seven, presentation of the IMRF salary compensation report. And eight, presentation of salary compensation report for all employees.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Steckedy?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes. All right, consent agenda is approved. We'll move to our information and discussion. And so first, we have our ISB tri-conference. And what that is coming for in November, I believe, is, I don't have the exact date.
22nd through to 24th.
22nd through to 24th. And so I asked that this be on our discussion. One huge thing that we talked about before is being a little bit more organized as far as the conferences or the meetings that we attend, trying to get the best out of them. And we, every year, it's a little bit better, I think, but I think there's much more, we can be much more organized is what we do and what we bring back to our board. So I believe they do have the agenda out. Is that right, Shannon?
Yes, yes, the agenda came out last week.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe even the week before.
So I don't know if you guys-
It was before that we were last year.
Yeah, we're, and so like, one of the things we, I think ourselves, we kind of kept it within and said like, oh, I want to get this out of it. I want to make sure I bring this back. And there are the huge gains we were looking for was on the superintendent and evaluations, how to engage our community. We're always looking and looking to get advice from fellow board members across the state on how they do it and how they're successful, diversity, and how that plays in our, in our schools and how to be effective that way. So I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything. And we can just be more, as a board, organized of what we're seeking this year.
It feels kind of weird because we don't have any like massive projects on the, like this, the buildings are like-
We're talking about that, yeah.
The last humongous thing that we've tackled something every single year, superintendent process, right? So it feels kind of weird that we don't have like an impending massive project. But I think construction is always my focus.
And facilities.
Probably will continue.
We could probably get some ideas if like, if we have, if we do move forward.
How to continue engaging the community in this, if this, if this happens, if this passes, how to continue engaging the community in the design process and-
I think another thing that I've gone to is, is still with community engagement. So that's a big thing, if anybody ever wonders about our board. But even recruitment and being better with new board members, even with this conference, and that's something we talked about before, but I've gone to those too, like how do you engage and, and recruit and have, how do you help prepare the next board that sits here, those kind of things. And, but I think there's, there is one way that we have moved. We've been asked to present about our process. So one is with the superintendent evaluation and how we crafted our tool and how we went about that. And we were asked to present on that and how our board did it. So we'll sit on a panel, Westmont CUSD 201 will just present on our process that way. And that's going to be on Saturday, November 23rd. So there's some questions they submitted. Is it Dr. Perry Hill? Yes, and so he's going to be facilitating that, that meeting, and we'll sit on that panel. And also, the process of choosing, of choosing our biggest job, choosing the superintendent, we're also asked to sit on that panel to talk about our process and how we did that and engaged the community in that process, so.
Because ISB was so impressed with how engaged our community was.
And they, they want us to speak on that in that process of hiring our superintendent. So I don't know if you guys have any other questions or comments or direction, even for me, with doing that. I don't, I do have a question, there are always are some special classes.
Of cost extra.
Yeah, but I don't know if those are closed or there's something to look into if we do want to do any of those special ones. I have, over the last couple of years, looked at it like, oh my gosh, I would have been happy to go to that and didn't ask about it beforehand. So if there's time to look into it, we should, just see.
Those are normally Thursday or Friday during the day, Friday during the day?
Friday, I believe. So kind of hard with, you know, getting downtown, but. All right, if there are no other questions or comments about that, we can move to our next discussion, discussion, the policy first reading. So our committee met in regards to changes to a policy regarding Title IX. And I don't know if you guys had a chance to review, it's, there are a lot of wording changes, and some with references and footnote changes. I don't think it was a major change in the policy, but definitely something to review as it's a very important policy to be aware of. This is a time that we can discuss it or ask questions. We don't vote on adopting that today. That will be at our next meeting.
These are not changes we brought forward. These are legal changes brought- These are legal changes brought forward by the state.
Important to say. And so we get a lot of guidance from our, from our lawyers reviewing this, so. Important but necessary changes. Any other questions or comments? Okay. We'll move to our action items. A large part is the adoption of our 2024-2025 budget. The chair will entertain a motion, whereas the Board of Education of Community Units School District Number 201, County of DuPage, State of Illinois, calls to be prepared, intend to form a budget, and the secretary of this board has made the same conveniently available to public, to public inspection for at least 30 days prior to final action thereon. And whereas a public hearing was held as to such budget on the 24th day of September 2024, notice of said hearing was given at least 30 days prior thereto as required by law, and all other legal requirements have been complied with. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of said district as follows. Section one, the fiscal year of this school district be and the same hereby is fixed and declared to be beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025. Section two, that the following budget containing an estimate of amounts available in each fund separately and of expenditures from each be and the same is hereby adopted as the budget of this school district for the said fiscal year.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
The budget's passed. Number two, board action on closed session minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the board action on closed session minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Motion passes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the destruction of the rabidum closed session minutes from September 2022 through February 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And that's just a standard.
Yes, these are standard protocols.
It's always this time.
For our minutes, yes.
Yes.
All right, we'll move to the superintendent's report.
It's been a beautiful past couple of weeks in our school community, some really nice events that showed, highlighted the partnership we have with our parents and our school community, starting with the B-PAC festival, was extremely well-attended in Ty Warner Park. So many parents and students and our staff members were present. I want to give a shout out to Edith and her whole team and the B-PAC leaders for just a beautiful event. It really epitomizes what we're trying to accomplish as a school community, bringing people together, celebrating, reflecting on our strengths and our diversity, and it was just a beautiful event. So a lot of gratitude, outstanding evening. Thank you to Edith and the parents and the B-PAC for all the work they put into that. I also want to say that we had our legacy Hoop Fest that was outstanding, so well-attended, so much fun, such a healthy thing, a lot of fun, fundraiser, a lot of people coming together. I want to thank Lindsay and Henry Gomez, and I see Ms. Franklin was here, I think she was out there helping to organize, and so many parents and staff members coming together, a few hundred people on a beautiful Saturday morning, playing basketball. And we had volunteers from our National Honor Society who were roughing, and it was just a really beautiful event for our community, healthy, positive, everybody working together. It's the way it should be. We have Homecoming Week this week at the high school. We have the parade on Thursday. I hope people come out and enjoy that. And then we have the homecoming game, and then for our students, the homecoming dance on Saturday. And that's just a beautiful part of the high school experience that our kids get to be a part of, so we're excited about that. We have our town hall meetings coming up on the 25th and the 26th at Manning at 6:30, and then at, on the 28th, Saturday morning at 10:00 a.m. And then we'll have October 1st meeting back at Manning at 6:30, and then October 8th at 5:30 before the board meeting that evening. The town hall meetings have been, we've only had one so far, but this whole process, starting with the summer when we held the meetings, the informational meetings, and continuing with the first town hall meeting, we really gathered some great information. We've listened to our community. It has impacted our thinking and our action planning. And this is, as we say on our flyers, the most important decision that any of us can remember in 201 history. And part of our being transparent as a board administration is welcoming the community. Connecting with community members has been the best part of this, hearing from them, learning from them, adjusting our practices, getting their expertise. We have such an amazing community, so many knowledgeable people, so many caring people who, you know, want to be a part of this democratic process. So it's really, it is what it should be, and it continues. So we encourage as many people as possible to be present at one of these meetings. We take on all questions, and we do have a referendum page that gives information that's easily accessible. Do we know the web address for that? Is it right off our website, our CUSD-201 website? So it's accessible. But I am really looking forward to the next round of these meetings where we get to connect with our community. And as I said, every question that's been asked, we answer in the most straightforward, transparent, effective way possible. So if you have questions, please. There were also, we're going to begin this next session with a tour of the building. For those who can't get around, we have a video tour that we will post online. But we're excited to continue to engage our community because this is an extremely important decision, and we welcome all of our CUSD-201 school community members to be a part of that. And second year in a row where we're putting forward a balanced budget, so I think that's important.
Oh, the Chicago. The University of Chicago came out today, didn't it?
Yes, that's the two.
Five Essentials.
The Five Essentials, yeah.
Yes. The University of Chicago, Five Essential Survey, one of the top research institutions in the world, put together a survey that's answered anonymously by our parents, students, and teachers. The high school had the number-one rating of any high school in Illinois for the third year in a row or fourth year in a row.
Again.
Yes. And that's number one, as I like to say, not top 1%, number one, out of every single high school in Illinois. It's over 550 that take the survey. It's incredible. As a district, they give you rankings too. How well-organized are you for potential success? And as a district, we have the highest rating. So this is something to be proud of. And it's like a customer satisfaction survey. The questions are very direct. Do you feel that your students are respected? Students, do you feel that you're respected by your teachers? Teachers, do you feel respected by the administration? Teachers, are you collaborative in nature? Teachers, do you take responsibility for student learning? The questions are very direct and, I think, very important questions to ask. And we are not just one of the best. We're the best as a district that can't get a higher ranking than we have. And as I said, the high school, since Illinois State Board of Education has administered this through the University of Chicago, has the number-one rating for student-to-teacher trust, for teacher-to-teacher trust, for teacher-to-administration trust. It's incredible. So good news.
Any other questions for Jack? Dr. Boden. So we will, I just want to mention that also the CUSD-201 Board of Education will have open seats in the April consolidated election. And so you can see, go to our CUSD-201 page or the DuPage County website for more information if you're interested in running for school board. We don't have any board reports.
I know you're going to bring it up, but just a heavy reminder that the game is at 6 o'clock on Friday. Our opposing team is coming down from almost St. Louis, so, yeah. So we're starting at 6 on Friday, so please remember that.
Any other board reports?
To me, just reiterate the town halls, please. Come to the town halls. You know, ask all the questions you want of Jack. I promise he won't be sweating as hard this time. It was very hot in that first one. But it's important to get the facts, you know? Don't rely on social media. Come and get the answers, you know, and ask questions. So we, we want the public to come.
Definitely. All right, so we'll go through future meetings and events. So I'm going to- There's another public comment?
Let me see if there is any.
Is there another public comment?
Any more public comment?
I'm going to restate the town hall meeting dates and times, just to make sure. First is tomorrow, September 25th at 6:30 p.m. And then again, on the 26th at 6:30 p.m. So if you're at the parade, we're aware that the parade will be just prior. Walk on around or turn around and come back to Manning with us. And the next one will be September 28th at 10:00 a.m. Then October 1st, 6:30 p.m. And then the last one is October 8th at 5:30 p.m. So again, watch out for signs and postings, but those are our dates. The parade, as we said before, is September 26th at 6 o'clock p.m. downtown Westmont. The high school, the homecoming game is the 27th, 6 p.m., not like I say to myself at 7:00, 6 p.m. Our next B-PAC meeting is October 1st at 6 p.m. at Miller. We have a SIP day. And dismissal times, please see or speak to your building leaders for specific times, but that will be October 2nd. And with that, is that the, no, that's not our conference times. I believe we'll have conference-
No, that's the following week, the 10th and the 11th.
I believe the sign up is tomorrow.
Starts tomorrow, yeah.
So just be aware of those. But sorry. SIP day is October 2nd. We have elementary math night, October 3rd, 5:30 p.m. at Manning. Our next CUSD-201 board meeting is October 8th, 6:30 at here at Village Hall. And that's what we have. And then look out for the conference times and dates for sign up tomorrow. This should be the following week. All right. The chair will entertain a motion to enter closed session to discuss personnel issues, student discipline, and so release of real propaganda just to cover it up. Can I have a motion for?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
And so after our close, we'll return here to close out our meeting, but there won't